Augie, I could start the web. Yep, there you go.
Are you streaming live?
Yep, we're live.
Okay, welcome to a work session of the Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees and Village of Mamaronek Police Reinvention. I'm sorry, with the police reinvention and, God, I forgot the name.
Reform and reinvention.
Reform and reinvention committee, thank you. I just need a motion from a trustee to open the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. If you're not speaking, please put your mic on mute. Because it just gets too cumbersome. I promise everyone will get a chance to say whatever they feel like saying tonight. But we shouldn't be talking over each other. And we're going to try and do this in an orderly fashion. It's Friday night, the 19th of February. Hopefully, we can get this done in a couple of hours and people can get on with their weekend. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Barbario, who's gonna kind of give us an outline of where we are, what the next steps are, and how we're moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Summer of last year, the governor put out an executive order, Order Number 203, which requires the chief executive officer of the municipality to put together a police reform and reinvention committee to discuss certain items that are included in a guidebook or guidelines document that he provided to all of us in August of 2020. We, of course, he did this during a pandemic and we were a little busy trying to keep everyone safe, but we finally put ourselves together to put something which we intended to do in October, but we finally got around to doing it in November. So on November 19, November 24th, December 13, 15, January 5, January 14, the committee had meetings, probably two hours, two hours plus in some cases. In addition to that, we had public forums on December 1st, December 10, and January 7. This evening is the PRC's seventh meeting as a joint session with the BOT, but it is the first Board of Trustees meeting that we're discussing the police reform and reinvention plan.
Eric, can I interrupt you for one second? Cliff, please promote Elsa Rubin to a panelist. I'm sorry, Jerry. Go ahead.
So so this is the first, this is the first meeting of the Board of Trustees. The governing body of the municipality has to approve a plan for us to submit to the state by April 1st. Therefore, we have two scheduled Board of Trustees meetings, March 8th, March 22nd, for the portion of public comment where the plan requires that we provide a draft, and a draft will be available on March 5th for the public to comment on the draft plan. What we have, what the committee has done and worked very hard to do is through a series of meetings and subcommittees, they created a list of, hi Elsa, they created a list of recommendations for the BOT to to consider. The committee worked very hard. Subcommittees did an excellent job. And what I can share, and I think I already shared with the Board of Trustees, is that most of the initiatives that were recommended were pretty much unanimous. All of the board members, all of the committee members, let's differentiate them, the committee members agreed on most of the recommendations. However, they were split on the the Citizen Complaint Review Board. Half of the respondents, when I asked them to give me a yes or a no, or support and do not support, half of them supported the Citizen Complaint Review Board. The other half did not support. But all of the other items that were listed in the recommendations were pretty much supported, if not unanimously, you know, 6-2 or 7-1. So there's some, there's some support there for everything else. That's it. I don't have anything else to share. It would be up to the Board of Trustees if they wanted to add meetings. Obviously, we're in budget season and I think we have four meetings next week or three meetings already next week. But I believe that my office can get the draft to the Board of Trustees by March 4 with the recommendations and the discussion that goes on this evening.
Well, I would like to go through each of the, like, the subcommittee and just have a little explanation. And if anybody has a comment, it would be a time to make their comment then. The first one is the training. And as you can see, the Training Committee would like to suggest the following. The Village of Mamaronek, keep doing what they're doing, okay? And complete CIT training. CIT training is a person in distress, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief?
So correct, it's crisis intervention training.
Crisis intervention, okay.
Can somebody put it on the screen? I think it'll be helpful.
Jerry, can you share that? I got a paper copy.
Yep, I'll share. I'll put it up now. Well, wrong document, hang on. This is it.
I'll look at it.
Tom, is that where you are?
No. What I'm seeing is collaborative is the key word. It'd be a mistake to frame these discussions as adversarial process.
Let me switch it. Let me switch the document. Sorry about that.
That's it. And then next is complete ABLE training, which is active bystander law enforcement training. I believe the chief has fully submitted that, and we are waiting to hear if we will be accepted. Chief, can you just give a brief description of ABLE training?
Yes, I'd like to actually just go back one to the crisis interventions training. So in regards to that, we do have eight officers already certified in that training. We have three scheduled to attend in March and three scheduled to attend in October of this year. They only offer the classes twice a year, so we have both sessions, we have officers scheduled. In terms, I'm sorry, can you say something?
I said good.
Okay. In terms of the ABLE training, so yes, that is the active bystandership for law enforcement. The department submitted the necessary letters. The application has been submitted. So we are waiting for them to contact us with the available training dates. So once we receive the training dates, we have two officers that are scheduled to attend the Train the Trainer. And then they will administer the training to the officers in the department. And actually, both of these items are actually part of Westchester County's Reform and Reinvention recommendations as well.
So the ABLE training, just to give an example, to use George Floyd as an example, the officers who kind of were not actively involved, but were standing by and, you know, not getting that man's knee off that man's neck, that they would have then, you know, that would have then been their responsibility to respond to that, am I right?
Well, it gives them, it gives, sorry, go ahead. It gives them the tools and resources to be able to speak up and to know how to properly intervene. So ABLE likens it to, you know, essentially giving an officer a gun and not telling them how to use it, right? Like, you just give them a PowerPoint presentation, expect them to know what to do with it. It's a powerful tool in the sense that you can tell someone to intervene, but if they don't have the proper training and resources to be able to intervene properly, then it's useless. So that's the whole concept before, behind it, is that it provides the training and resources to be able to properly intervene, whether it be in situations involving civilians or fellow officers, maybe amongst each other, or any type of situation. So it protects the civilians and it also protects fellow officers.
And you might think that's common sense, right, to intervene, but what they, some of the barriers which they talk about, which part of the training also discusses not only law enforcement, but an operating room scenario or a cockpit where if the person has higher rank than that person, they might not have the courage or the confidence to be able to speak up. So the training gives officers the tools to be able to do that.
And we do similar training in the military as well. So it's very, it's very tried and true, and it's very hands-on. This is not just a, you know, PowerPoint type of presentation. This is a hands-on training that came out of multiple, multiple incidences and directives actually out of the DOJ to implement some similar training down in New Orleans years ago, and it's based off of the success of that training.
Thank you. Can anybody have any questions or concerns for the committee? Before we move forward? Okay.
PRC, so. Just one question. Is there any other training that did not make the list that we should be looking at? I guess that's maybe.
Yep. Once we get further into the document, there are other trainings that are listed here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Police accreditation policies and accreditation recommendation. Accreditation has been a goal of the previous Village of Mamaronek Police Chief, that's Mr. Lee. Accreditation status is aspiration of most, if not all, police departments throughout New York State. The process of accreditation is not taken lightly, requires a commitment on the part of the police department to analysis, revamp, modify, and modernize our internal process from policies to training to discipline and more. A police department must be committed to the process as it exposes areas that may have been overlooked and never considered. Recommendations of the subcommittee are the start of the process and accreditation by filling the application with New York State. Chief, has the application been filled out?
Yes, we have filed the application indicating that we are in the process of attempting to achieve accreditation.
Okay. To continue the power DMS to modernize the existing policies and add new policies to this platform. Where are we with that?
So, yeah, so we are currently utilizing that platform. And basically, it's an online tool that helps us in revising, reviewing, revising our current policy, and then putting it out to all of patrol so that they can review it, acknowledge it, sign it. So that is the process going forward to be able to achieve accreditation.
And the last one, continue encouraging the police force to use power DMS as it becomes a critical and essential resource of written policies and procedure for the Village Police Department to do and performing their jobs efficiently. You want to just explain that more?
So what we've also have started to do is there's also, as part of that application, a training platform. So what we're able to do, because we are limited with actual training days, we can actually go ahead and put PowerPoint presentations, things of that nature, onto this training application, and then send it out to all the officers. They have to read it, acknowledge it, and sign it. So it's another way for us to be able to get training to the department, another avenue which we didn't have before, to get additional trainings out to all the officers.
Anybody have questions or concerns from any of the board members?
For the chief? Question, Chief. I guess the roadmap document for this is the Standards and Compliance Verification Manual, updated last December. Is that the document that you need to fulfill to get certified? Am I correct?
So I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
The document for accreditation is that called Standards and Compliance Verification Manual. That's really the roadmap to get there, right?
Yes, so right now, I believe there is 110, there's 110 standards that.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, because that seems to be, you know, detailed, and some of the subject matters are we are connected to some of the recommendations here, but some are not, kind of goes way beyond the recommendations. So it looks like a very intensive, complicated, time-consuming process. What would be the next step? How long do you think this could take? I know you just filed, but what is, what is the?
What's the timeline?
The next, yeah, the timeline and Board of Trustees intervention, I, as I read it, there's going to be a lot of kind of work together because some things have to be put in place. But you're leading the process, but so how do you envision this in the next year, two years?
Yes, so we would like to have a lot of this done by this year. The challenge is, so for example, last year, we really started the process and wanted to go forward with it, and then the pandemic happened, and we kind of got derailed a little bit. So now we're back on track. What I would hopefully like to see manpower permitting is to try to have one person assigned full-time to do this. Right now, we have a couple of people that are doing it, but it's part-time when they're not doing other things. And based on my conversations with other departments, they have someone full-time assigned to this. So based on manpower, I'd like to see if I can accomplish that and have someone assigned fully to doing that.
Seems like a worthy task.
So how long, with the timeline, in the, you know, if everything moves the best you if you can dedicate a full-time person, how do you think this could work? Let me put it that way.
I would say six, eight months, maybe? I'm just, I'm just looking at my backup here.
I'll probably say a realistic goal could be the first quarter of 2022.
Okay, so by the time we have everything in order, you're saying first quarter of 22.
So you.
Thank you.
And then it has to be in place for 90 days before legal. Okay, so what Sergeant Valentine is just telling me is before they come out, the group comes out and does an audit to make sure we have everything in place. It has to be in place for 90 days prior to them coming out to review our materials.
Okay, so you should probably have it in place by the fall, hoping that you can get it reviewed in early 2022. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So Chief, are any areas in the 110 laws that need to be adhered to where we're very weak?
So a lot of it has to do with just revising our policies, which we're doing. There are some standards that we are going to have to look at, and I'll give you an example for, one thing talks about evidence, and you have to have an enclosed area for certain types of evidence. That's something that we might have to create. So there are some things that are very specific. That's going to take some work on our part and some money to be able to accomplish some of the standards.
So Chief, is some of the limitations the physical plant that you have to labor under in, you know, in our department?
Yes. So one of the things that we already accomplished was there were very strict guidelines regarding property management and evidence. And we had to create a brand-new room for that and a system to categorize evidence, and that's already been done. So that was a huge hurdle that was probably accomplished a couple of years ago, and this was in the early stages of accreditation. So as we go through the standards, we'll have to see which items might take more of an effort than others.
Thank you. The next category is.
Does this come back to us in any, or are you, are you just running with it and you relate to the state? Or are you coming back to the Board of Trustees at some point to review some of these standards? Some are connected to what we're doing here, like use of force investigations, or are you? How does it proceed?
Yep. So as we proceed forward, I can keep the mayor and the board advised as to our progress. And then should there be instances where we might be unable to attain a standard because of financial issues, then I might have to come to you. But we'll cross that bridge, I guess, when we come to it.
Okay, so we'll talk along the way.
Yes, of course.
Chief, would it be unreasonable to ask for a monthly update on this?
Um, I can probably provide you with a monthly update, sure.
I think maybe, Jerry, we should include that.
Um, yeah, so the police department provides a monthly report to me, which is a confidential report, which I share with the board. So if Chief Terusa would like to augment that monthly report with a accreditation update, that would be fine.
You just add a category. But what I was thinking of is as part of the plan that the board gets a monthly update so that we can keep, so we can track with the chief where we're going and whether we're, you know, whether we have to extend time or whatever we have to do to try and make it up.
Right, so I think as part of the recommendation, I don't think it's necessarily requiring a deadline, but just the fact that this is, this is something that we're working towards, as was the some of the other jurisdictions are doing as well.
No, I understand, but I was just simply saying that just as part of the plan that we have a monthly update, I did not put a a deadline that you have to finish this within eight months or.
I understand now. I jotted it down.
Thank you.
Community recommendations. It's all, you know, some of the stuff I know has been done at some level. Conduct both indoor and outdoor forums. Forums include both topic-specific and informal question and answer. Examples domestic violence, New York State mandatory arrest, explore cultures and beliefs. Utilize LMCTV. That would be good. We have a medium there that is untapped and is looking for more engagement in the community. Scheduled invasion, coffee with a cop, night out. We've done some of that. I think we need to do a lot more of that. All officers receive crisis intervention training. Identify what issues require police notification response and provide resources for non-police matter. Okay, I'm going to ask for an explanation in a minute on that. Continue to maintain an open online survey. The survey that was filled out allow people to continue to access it and hopefully to refine it too. Add trained professionals to Village of Mamaronek staffing based on funding, i.e. social workers and therapists. That's, you know, that's an expense that we'll have to talk about in a budget time. Chief, can you identify what resources require police notification response and provide resources for non-police matters?
Sure, so I'll actually just speak briefly on the other ones as well. So the other ones obviously are COVID, you know, dependent. So we will plan on doing both indoor and outdoor forums. I've already reached out to officers in the department here about their interest in being part of a, you know, 10-minute segment on different topics. So we'll come up with topics that are, we think would be interested, interesting to the community. In terms of the, so one of the things that came up was, should, people sometimes don't know when to call, who to call, so they just call the police, because they don't have the resources or they don't know who else to call. So to be able to provide a list of resources and contact phone numbers, depending on what their issue is, give them an example of an issue and who they can contact. I've already spoken with our IT person, and we are going to work towards creating a new, a Village of Mamaronek Police webpage. And that webpage would have that information as well as an abundance of other information. And what we would look to do is to mirror that page to a Spanish version as well. So that if someone doesn't read or understand English, they would click on a link and it would bring them to the Spanish version of the page.
Okay. Adding trained professionals. Now, that's obviously something that the Village of Mamaronek has to talk about. I'd like to see, you know, what's been going on around the other communities about doing this too. I mean, I like the idea, but you know, the idea of having a social worker 24 hours or on call, maybe it would be on call, I don't.
Right, so right now, we use the Westchester County Crisis Stabilization Team. Sometimes they are able to come out on scene at the time of an incident, but we do use them for follow-up care. If, we will send them referrals of people who we've interacted with in the community that might need assistance. I know that some of the other municipalities, and I believe Westchester Counties, did talk about maybe doing like a shared service option where the county would possibly have someone available 24/7, and that different municipalities might be able to utilize those services.
And I can imagine that it's a hard call too, right? I mean, I'm just speaking from my own.
Yes, and I think, right, so, and part of, you know, the crisis intervention training that officers receive is to help them when they go to calls of people that are experiencing some kind of crisis. But the flip side of that is if the person might be having a crisis, but it's not immediate or an emergency, or something that someone feels might not be at the level where they need police interaction, then maybe we can provide them with different phone numbers or resources of other people that they can call. But obviously, if it's an emergency and they feel that it's escalating, then they would, of course, call 911 and we would respond.
Yeah, I guess part of what I've observed in life is that sometimes you're dealing with somebody who has an alcohol or a drug problem, and you know, they, they, they're very down and they seem, you know, suicidal, but then the next thing you know, you know, they can be violent. And so it's hard to call, you know, I don't envy anybody who's in that position. It's a tough thing. And I just, you know, I don't know the answer is.
So, yeah, I just wanted to jump in because this was part of one of my subcommittees. This is the beginning of this conversation, but around the country, there are different programs now that are being started or have been working for the past six, nine, 12 months. And dependent upon what Westchester County does and if there's a shared services or not, there are a lot of similar but different programs around the country that we could probably pull from to see what they're doing and what works and what doesn't work to maybe alleviate some of those phone calls that are going to the police department. Because it seems like a substantial amount of the calls going in there are not, you know, your traditional calls that would go to a police department. It's just that we're a small community, and so everybody just calls them.
Yes.
But we do have information that we can forward to the Board of Trustees to review as a starting point to follow up on that. And then the second comment is what we wanted to do with a survey, and I think there's two ideas that we would like. One would be a follow-up after interactions with police officers that would come to some group other than just the police so that people can share their experience. And we would substantially shorten it from what we did. Obviously, we were trying to get a lot of information in a short period of time. We would make it a much, much simpler survey that anyone can access at any time, so there's ongoing information, because obviously the police are working every day 24/7. So there are things happening all the time. We just caught a starting point. We wanted it to continue indefinitely, just to continue getting information from the community as they get comfortable using this as a forum to share their voice.
Sharon, a question. How do you think, or maybe not for you exactly, but if you want to jump on it, of course, but anybody else, how would it, how would it be managed? After it's been refined, et cetera, as you put it, how would it be managed? Because if it's a survey, essentially it's an input, right? But then somebody has to be in the receiving end. I don't think it'll be a live document. So any, did you have, I think you had discussions on this. I didn't hear everything, but I tried my best to hear a few of your meetings. I remember hearing a few exchanges on this, but where did you come out at the end? Where are you now? And anybody else from the committee, and maybe the chief also?
Yeah, I think it was going to be, so we have two different conversations going that one. so we have two different conversations going that one, there's a lot of disagreement on, which is going to be the civilian oversight. Uh, and the other was that there was a very short time period for this group to try and get this much information together. We started the week of Thanksgiving and we finished just after New Year, so it was really, really tight and it was in the middle of a spike in the pandemic as well. And we feel like even when April 1st comes and you have to submit recommendations to the state, that there are still conversations to be had, and so we had hoped there would be, whether it's a continuation of this committee under a different name, because obviously the, the PRC will have stopped because it's a New York State mandate. Uh, some sort of continuation where there would still be volunteers from the community, maybe from this group, that would keep looking at the things that are not finished. Um, and that they would have in, they would be able to look at the surveys and bring that information up. So we have two different ideas of how to proceed and we're a small community, so it's, it's, we're still flushing that out and there's still a lot of disagreement. Um, but the idea is for it not to fall to the police chief or that group, but for some other group to be able to look at it, so people feel free to really share their opinions and know that they're being looked at by somebody else and that then they can be brought back to the police.
So let me ask a question. Did the committee, um, consider, um, further interaction between the police department and our schools at all the different levels? Anybody?
Uh, you know, I, I don't think that, uh, the committee went into that too deeply. I, I think over the years, uh, the schools have, uh, and I know the, uh, Mamaronek School System has rejected that on multiple occasions. Uh, having, uh, community, uh, having a resource, uh, officer in the school. Uh, I don't think RYNEC is in favor of it also. So, you know, and, you know, we had representatives of the school district here and I, I don't think that they were keen on it.
So what I, what I can tell you is, um, one of the subcommittees did speak about just officers in general in the schools. Um, we do have two youth detectives and they do, uh, visit the schools. Um, right now, two of the schools are, um, hosting dare classes, so one of the detectives does still continue to do that in the schools. Um, they're there, uh, during recess, they're there during some health classes. So they're not a continuous presence in the school, um, but they do visit the schools. Uh, right now, we do not have any SROs, um, that are dedicated to the school system.
I wasn't thinking necessarily of a dedicated, I, you know, sort of like, uh, engagement, you know, like, you know, you know, coffee with the cop, et cetera. It seems to me, and I realize that, that from various times, different, different schools have been more or less receptive. But over the long course of, um, my being lifelong resident, it seems to be very helpful at times. And I think in this era of trying to establish communication and dialogue, it might be, um, wise to include that as a recommendation. Uh, we can't impose it upon the schools. I think it's, we need to offer it and see if there are ways that we can be proactive in presenting programs to them that would be helpful and educational.
And, and I agree with that because I think, ju- I think that having a police presence in the schools is a good thing because I don't want students to see a police officer and automatically think something bad. I want it to be almost commonplace where they say, oh, here is Officer So-and-so, or, you know, they feel safe versus feeling, feeling, feeling that they're in fear. So I would be open to that.
I, I think, Jerry, we need to include that if you've taken notes to put that as part of a recommendation somehow.
It's like an engagement.
That wasn't a recommendation of the committee. That's a recommendation that should be discussed in public then and not just decided here by one trustee.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to decide anything, Tom. We're, we're trying to do an outline so that as the board goes through this, we will discuss it. We're not deciding anything tonight and no.
You just told them to put it in.
For dis- so we can discuss it.
Okay, for discussion. That's not what you said.
It was, however, not an oversight by the PRC. Our committee decided to leave that out as a specific recommendation.
I'm sorry, Terry.
The committee discussed it. I believe my words to the chief were, so are they big brothers or are they narcs? Uh, we discussed the issue and we left it off the most important recommendations, not by oversight. Uh, of course, the board can do what it likes, but it is not a recommendation, and I think Tom was making that point as well. It was not a specific recommendation of the committee.
That was the point I was making.
Um, and so could I just ask for my own notification? What was the hesitations or concerns?
I think people had different ones, but one of them, uh, that struck me right now is you don't want, um, young people to be afraid of the police, but I would say maybe you do. Maybe a healthy dose of fear until these police are as well-trained as we hope they ultimately will be, uh, isn't such a bad thing, especially for students of color. And I would also say that, you know, the role of police in a school is going to be bifurcated. And I know both of the, uh, of the officers who are youth officers and, you know, from what I know, they seem like great guys, but they're not always necessarily going to be the youth officers. And you, you don't know whether you're gonna get somebody who the kids are gonna learn to look up to and loo- learn to trust or whether they're really there to see if there's criminal activity going on by, you know, Seawall or something. So I, I am hesitant to put my children in a close interface with most police officers.
Um, if, if I could, um, go back to the earlier subject of therapists or social workers, I wanted to ask to what extent the police department in Mamaronek right now has a relationship with the Community Counseling Center? And to what extent that was discussed as a possible resource for the department in getting social workers or therapists, you know, uh, assistance?
It definitely was, Kelly.
Yes, uh, it was discussed. We currently don't utilize them because we do utilize this crisis stabilization team out of Westchester County. Um, they have been very responsive and we have had a lot of success with them so far.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Dan, I, I don't want to leave the school discussion apart aside, but as, as a parent, I can tell you there's hesitation to have police in schools. It's just, it hasn't been altogether helpful. And to the extent you want the police officers to be seen as friends and not foes and, and to develop a relationship, I think there are places to do that, not in schools, that might be better. So I, I don't think it's, I think it's a controversial idea, Dan. It's just what I wanted you to know.
Well, it's something we can talk about.
Yeah.
Who's talking? John?
Uh, it's me, yeah. I just, let me finish quickly, Theo. I, I, I do remember from the last time this discussion came up that one of the, uh, so, one of the, 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 uh, topics against it was that, uh, the real estate people said if you have police in schools, it gives, uh, people the impression that it, it is, uh, unsafe to, uh, put the children in schools. That there's a need for police in schools. Uh, that was, you know, something that I remember from one of those summit meetings years ago. Uh, so, you know, just, there's, there's, there's a lot of, uh, you know, a- a- as Kelly and, uh, Theo pointed out, they have children in the school. I, I think that this is something that's gonna, uh, be very important to folks who have children still in the school system.
Yeah, but Kelly, most of my kids have not had interface with the police. Ni- neither of them much, although I won't say none. Um, and, uh, I, but I have heard through our discussions, through the chief and, and other members of the committee, that, um, there might be an incident either simultaneous to kids being in high school or even middle school or later on, and then the cop is like, hey, I know you, come over here, come over here. And it might have a different vibe than it might if the cop was a, you know, a stranger to just some trouble-making kid. It could be, hey, I know your mother, come over here, I'm giving her a call or whatever.
Um, okay.
Thanks.
I think we have to, we have to now investigate what's going on at Seawall.
I spilled the beans. Is it still called Seawall? That's what I want to know. I guess so.
Okay, uh, the police oversight recommendation. I, I just want to say something before, uh, we get into this because I was on the committee and, uh, I, I just want to weigh in on this. And, uh, I want to say this, I've written it out because I, I've noticed lately that, uh, things that I say get, uh, misconstrued and, uh, either purposely or accidentally in the community, and I just want to be clear about this. Uh, because I've given this a lot of thought, uh, and I've gone back and forth about it. And I think that it is an important topic in a lot of ways. And I, I feel that the main goal of the process that we are now in is, is to engender more trust of the police department in the community by people of color and by the population in general. Anything that grows that trust will be beneficial, not only to the police department, but to the whole community. This is not to say that I think that our police department hasn't made great strides forward toward these goals in the past 20 years. I think our police department has made substantial progress. This is a department that I am proud of and that residents should take pride in also. But there are always improvements that can be made in any institution to make it more responsive to the community. I think any idea that can engender greater trust while recognizing that policing is a difficult, dangerous and complicated vocation will promote greater understanding between the community and our department. So I support the idea of civilians having a role in reviewing complaints made about the police department. I think that the details of how this committee will be formed will be a subject of legislation and those details will not and should not be settled here tonight. Those with strong opinions on this issue can participate in the legislative process where I am sure there will be multiple opportunities for public input. And I didn't come by it as lightly. I have, uh, many relatives, uh, and friends in police field. Uh, I have great respect for people who do it. I know how hard it is. Uh, I know, you know, the challenges that they face every day. And, uh, frankly, I, I, I didn't do it because I thought it was too hard. Uh, but that being said, we have to make sure that the people of this community and every community feel like, you know, they, they will be heard and if there is an issue, it will be taken, uh, seriously. Not that that isn't happening now, but it needs to be more open and having civilians involved in the process, uh, along with the police will make for a better outcome. Uh, so, so that's where I come down on that. And that, that was not, uh, easy for me. Uh, I, I realize that there'll be, uh, people on both sides who aren't satisfied with that, but, but I think that that is, you know, what I'm gonna support moving forward. And I hadn't said that before and I just, I am a member of the committee and I wanted to get that out. So thank you for indulging me. Okay, this goes on for, you know, uh, the, who worked on this?
Um, Lauren, Sharon and Derek.
Why don't we start with Lauren?
Okay, um, I, I first, I, first of all, I want to be clear that, um, like, we have this intro paragraph here that we understand that there are, like you said, possibly rules, statutes, regulations that all have to be fit into this. And this is ultimately going to come down to a much more, much larger, more collaborative process to make sure that everything is done properly. Um, that said, I think also, like we said, this is a very divisive topic. And I think one of the reasons it's so divisive is I think the majority of people, not everybody, I think the majority of people either land on one side or the other as to whether or not it should be fully civilians that sit on this review board or whether or not the review board should exist at all. Very few people, um, have been able to, uh, discuss further any other positions or if they, if they have, they just definitely agree one way or the other. So this is kind of an attempt to, to bring everybody a little bit more into the middle because it is a lot more divisive than, um, I think personally it should be. Um, that said, in the interest of transparency, I think one of the reasons, and this has come up over and over again, that people do not make the complaints that they would otherwise make pursuant to, uh, police interaction is because they either think that it's pointless and nothing will get done or they're worried about some kind of backlash. Um, the backlash situation is something that needs to be looked at and addressed, I think separately. Backlash, I, whether it exists or not, I, I do not know. Um, but whether or not people think something will be done, that's something that can be addressed through transparency. Part of the idea behind this process is that there are several steps that have to be taken before action is taken against an officer or a decision is made not to take action against an officer. And because of those steps, it adds to the transparency in the process. It does not remove the ability to discipline or not discipline from the command structure, which, like I've said, I have military JAG background. I do understand that that is very important to the police. It's very important to the military as well. That was my, um, take on this. But at the end of the day, it does allow for the process to be more collaborative, more transparent, and it does allow for complaints to come through the board rather than directly, automatically to the police chief. No one is saying the police chief is taking complaints and just shoving them in the drawer because I'm sure that is not what's happening. But this process ensures that that is definitely not the case and it shows everybody that that's not the case. Um, we had several discussions around this along with Lieutenant Gata and this was kind of the decision we came to here. Um, again, open to adjustments pursuant to laws, statutes, regulation or recommendations. But, um, that, we tried to be as succinct as possible without going, without being too vague, I guess, is the idea.
You know, I, I just, what I was thinking about this, uh, part of how I tried to view it was from the police officer's perspective. You know, I, I do a job that's a particular job and, uh, you know, you, you have to have, be trained in doing that job. And how would I feel if someone else came in and questioned, uh, what I was doing? And what I thought is I, I would resent it at first, but in explaining why I'm doing what I'm doing, sometimes it gives me more clarity about my job. And although my job has safety implications, it, it doesn't have the vast implications that the police officers have about, you know, keeping people safe, keeping themselves safe, keeping the public safe. You know, I, I think it's, it's a very complicated, uh, trade, if you will. And, uh, you know, like I said before, I, I admire them for doing it, but I, I don't want to, I don't want them to think that this is targeted at them, but it's targeted at helping the public understand what they do and helping the public see that there is a process and if there is legitimate concerns and legitimate problems, that they're gonna be addressed. And that will make, uh, us all a better department and it'll make for better police officers. And that's, that's how I came to the decision.
So just to add on to some of what Lauren said, um, I think part of, I, I'm gonna go just from conversations I've had with some of the police officers as well. Um, some of the concern is that it's just some civilian off the street making a judgment call, right? And you don't know anything about what I do and you're gonna now come in and, and make this determination. And so part of being on the board would require some training. So this isn't just show up and be a part of a board. It's going to involve training on police procedures and on things that are happening within the police department, what the rules and regulations are. Um, to, to give more weight or credibility to those civilians. Um, and there will be terms, you know, and if there's a conflict of interest, there will have to be some backup person. You know, if I happen to know the police officer in charge, then I would have to sort of step aside and have someone else step in. Uh, so I think we didn't put everything in here because there were so much, but there has to be a process on the selection of the civilians and there has to be a process on, uh, not just what, how you communicate to them and what gets handled through them, but then who is on this, uh, committee and how they're trained and what they're gonna do. Um, and something we didn't get into yet that I will follow up with Lauren on if we continue this is that we're in the same exact situation as probably 15 other municipalities in Westchester. We have a 50, uh, person police department. Some have fewer than 50. You get five, you know, if you get five complaints per year, it's a lot because right now they're not even necessarily coming in. Um, if we get two per year, even if they tripled, you're talking about six per year. That's not a lot. Um, there might be an opportunity to sort of, um, do something with other municipalities of similar size so that we're even getting rid of some of the who knows who by working together with, uh, Tarrytown or Peekskill or some of these other small municipalities. Um, and we didn't get that far yet, but, uh, in the Westchester group that I was in, I don't, I don't remember if you were in it, Lauren, when I sent the invite out a couple of weeks ago. You know, they, they, there's a lot of talk about shared services because there's a lot of small municipalities. And so this might be one place where we can, we can share that resource and the training and all of that.
I mean, I think that concept is phenomenal and when I first, um, And when I first started thinking through what I thought about these oversight committees and including civilians and police officers. I mean, if I had, if I had it my way, I would love to see some kind of statewide initiative where you do, where you are able to pull police officers from different departments who are completely indifferent to the department that they're taking a look at or the investigation that they're seeing. So you can pull independent officers. I can liken it, for example, when we have military courts marshals and you pull a jury of members in, you have to ensure that they're not in the same unit. And that's the problem we run into with these small departments and these small villages. That is just the nature of the issue. We as a, you know, a village don't have the ability to just dictate to the state or even to the county that we need more resources as far as that's concerned. I would love to see something much larger than this where you are able to pull from all over the state or the county for this type of thing. But, you know, that's out of our hands, but of course it's not out of our hands long term, but it's out of our hands as a village, I think.
Right. It's, it's short-term out of our hands, but I think if every village, every village and city and town and whatever I'm missing are having the same conversation, and I'll say from what I did hear and from my own research, this is happening everywhere. So even for the people who are against it, it's, it's happening everywhere. And maybe it doesn't work in certain places like New York City. I know there's a lot of issues. They have, what, 33,000 police officers? We have 50. I think there's a way that we can make it work to our advantage. And I think from reading the surveys, one of the things I'll say is I think transparency is so important today. And us being able to, us meaning the village, being able to share how many complaints are coming in and that they are being fully investigated and that if, if something wrong happens, it's going to be dealt with. That, just that alone is important. That will open up communication and that will build trust. Because right now no one knows the process. Like I've got to go digging to figure out what's going on and I think I'm kind of.
And like I, and like I said, if you're not ultimately removing the ultimate decision from the police chief or from the board of trustees, whoever's making that ultimate decision. But at the end of the day, if they're rejecting every single recommendation of coming out of this committee, then that's, you know, there's something, there's something clearly going on here or, you know. So it does, by adding that extra step, they have to be able to answer for the reasons why they are taking action or are not taking action. So the police chief, like I said, I doubt she would do this. But, you know, if she just decided she's going to just throw away every recommendation this board ever makes, well, she's going to have to answer to that because there's so much transparency, there's more transparency to the process. There's a, it's very obvious that something's going on if that's the case. And then the one other thing I did want to touch on that, that John had mentioned in several of our other meetings as well was that one of the reasons why there has been some evidence, and I know that this is also controversial, but some evidence that fully civilian review boards have not been as effective is because of the lack of buy-in from police officers. And so by including them in the process, even if it's, you know, we, like I said, we, we are recommending three civilians to police officers. I know many police officers rather see three police officers to civilians, something of that nature. But, you know, by including police officers, they are part of the process. And so the ultimate decision that the board comes to, there's transparency for their department as well. It's not just transparency to us, it's also transparency to them, which thereby in theory should increase some level of buy-in and some accountability to the civilians. So that's, you know, that's where we're coming from with this, I, you know.
And as, when we're talking about the police officers, another reason for buy-in is people are going to make unfounded complaints. It, it happens all the time. You gave me a ticket, I'm going to make a complaint. And maybe we don't have a lot of them right now here, but if we open this up, there's always that potential. And being able to have a civilian group clear a police officer is pretty strong for the police officers to support. You know, this is another group, not just, hey, the chief or lieutenant or whoever. It's not just one of these internal blue lines or, you know, when I was younger, that it was the blue wall. It's not that. It's this independent group reviewing what happened and saying, hey, this is unfounded. And if the same people are coming forward and it's unfounded all the time, that something should be done to, to deal with that as opposed to a police officer just having these accusations on their record and not having this transparency of, you know, they were cleared, nothing really happened. So it's for everybody. It's to protect the police officers from the unfounded complaints. It's to help fix the problems when we find it. And it's to create the transparency within the community that they know that they have a place to go, that there will be somebody who's going to have this open conversation about it. And that you're building trust along the way, hopefully both for the police officers in that system and also for the civilians.
Can I interject here a few minutes, just to clarify, of course, I want to hear from everybody, but, but I just want to ask a little bit about the structure that you've put here because I appreciate the general discussion that we have. And I've also learned that sometimes we need to put some, some structure, some bones to our discussions so that we know what are we, how are we moving forward? So, so first, do I get it, Lauren, that you are in support of, of this proposal, the way it is laid out here?
Yes, yes.
It didn't clearly say. Okay, but, okay, so it is.
Yes, well, this is, this is what our committee, this is what our committee put together to recommend. So, yes.
Okay, I get Charles' curve. And for the mayor then, I, mayor, this, this has like four pieces to it. It has what the complaint board will do. And it's broken down in three pieces. Of course, you know, what doesn't, small like the hat, very famous Mr. Gaddis, now example of the hat and other more serious ones. But then it comes to the composition and how they do it. Are you, are you suggesting that this four pieces is what you're, what you are?
Not at all. Not at all.
Okay, that's why I want to clarify. What's, what's your position about this four pieces?
Let me just, I've read the statement, so I would, it would be clear. And what I said.
It's not clear to me if you're in support of these four pieces or not. I didn't get it.
Well, let me explain, Victor.
Right.
Because I read the statement because I explained that this would have to be the subject of legislation. And I know that legislation changes things and we have not begun that process. We have not begun the process of vetting all this. We have not, you know, looked with the lawyer about whether all of this is doable. So I'm not going to commit to specifics until we've had a good, you know, legal evaluation of this. And we've gone through the process of examining this. We've gone through the process of looking at what other communities have done. So that's why I said in my statement, I'm in favor of the village of Mamaroneck having a police oversight commission. But, you know, we, we need to work out the details. And while these details might be what ultimately becomes, I'm not going to sit here and say I commit to that. And I don't know why I would, but I'm not going to sit here and commit to that until I see what actually works in practicality, until we get input from the police department, the PBA and people in this community. Because there might be better ideas than this, or this might be ultimately the best idea. But I, I never said that I was committing to what's on his paper. Actually, I specifically said that we shouldn't, this shouldn't be the subject of our discussion tonight because it's going to be the subject of legislation. And I think the legislation, the devil is in the details.
And if I could be clear, that's, I think that's why that person, I'm sorry.
And I'm not going to commit or say I'm going to be in favor of everything here without going through that process. It would be, you know, legislative malpractice.
And I think ultimately that was our, our, why we had that caveat at the beginning. So I'm, I'm not trying to say that this, I, I think we're in the same boat in that I understand that, you know, this as it's laid out may not mesh with the Westchester Police Act, for example. Because we obviously didn't have the full amount of time that is required to put together legislation, right? This was what we, our general recommendations. But the first paragraph was very key to make it clear that we understand that this needs to be in line with that. And if I, it says, "The creation of collaborative complaint review board comprised of appointed civilians and police officers to receive complaints and recommend a disposition or further investigation of such complaints. The PRC subcommittee recognizes that the process set forth below must align with the parameters set forth in the Westchester Police Act and all applicable state, county and local laws. As such, we recommend the following and are open to further discussion as to how to properly adjust and implement." So that's, that's a key factor in what we're recommending here, just to be clear.
Can I say something? May I?
Look, I, I just want to say, I keep hearing people harping on training, training, training. We have a grand jury, we have a jury and they're charged on the law. So if there's an officer, I'd rather see a village attorney or a village representative who can let, let, let the group know what the law is. Because I constantly will hear in this day and age that the officer followed procedure. We never know what procedure is, but it seems like the procedure isn't a bug, it's a feature. So what I'm saying here is that the idea of a civilian complaint review board with officers on it is not a civilian complaint review board. At no time, and I don't know any in this state where the board, any civilian complaint board actually has the authority to discipline a cop or an officer. Recommendations, but they don't discipline. So if an officer is accused of something, I think the people can say, look, did he follow procedure? And all in this whole process, we, in the beginning, we've asked for procedures and we got piecemeal procedures. So even right now, we couldn't be able to tell. Okay, if an officer did something that violated that, that procedure because that's an in-house thing. So yeah, these guys, whoever would be, and ladies and gentlemen, whoever would be on this committee, I would assume that like, like we recommended, they take an oath, they keep their mouths shut. And everything goes like that. And then still would have to charge them on the law, what, if they violated, what they violated. This is really, I'm just going to give you an example. At some point, at some point real soon, the village of America is going to get notification of a video. There's a video out there right now of two, of a sergeant in Mamaroneck and an officer. And it's tagged under Miami Police Department, so it doesn't hit the village. But at some point in the next two weeks, you're going to hear about it. And I, I've been harping on cameras and we keep delaying, we're going to say we're looking for these cameras. But that's part of oversight because if you had cameras, you're going to see if you could refute what that video shows at that traffic stop. And then we're going to go, it'll come to a complaint review. And if that person could look at that video and say, well, where's the police officer's video? And if you don't have any, it's going to be, well, he followed procedure. At some point, the group, whoever you choose to be on that, that committee has got to know police procedures. And it can't come from an officer saying, well, this is how we do it. So I don't know how this is going to work. And I really, I am in favor of it and I'm also not in favor of it. Because if it doesn't have teeth, meaning if it can't make that recommendation and the police chief takes it serious, then what good is it? You had, you did a poll, 25% of the people who took that poll or around that area said they'd be uncomfortable making a complaint to the police department. Okay, that's who we're trying to solve. That's what the problem we're trying to solve is that 25%. Because if you feel comfortable making a complaint, and we've already know that no complaints were founded, to be true last year or the year before. But what about that 25% that never made it to the chief's desk? That never got investigated or that never would investigate because they were afraid to bring it forward. Okay, that's what we have to really, I mean, you guys are the elected officials. We took this as a volunteer and we're thankful for being part of the process. But you guys got to seriously consider those people making this decision. That's all I'm saying. I'm sorry to keep rambling on.
You, you made cogent points. And this, this, this will be, you know, something that's going to be, we, we have to come up with some proposed legislation. And then that legislation is, is going to be commented on by the public, I'm sure extensively. And, you know, your comments carry, you know, a lot of weight. And, you know, so do, you know, listen, you're going to have to listen to the PBA and we're going to have to listen to people, you know, who have very divergent opinions on this. But, you know, we're going to be covering police cameras next. And I think that that's, that is a good topic. And I think that, you know, that's something that the Board of Trustees is going to have to decide to put the resources into.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Does any other department in the village have, have say-so in their, in their disciplinary actions? Meaning, I, I know they're different. I know they're different.
Yeah, they are vastly different. But it, yeah, but I think you'd find that also in, you know, in New York City and, you know, the housing authority doesn't have, you know, the say that the police department has, you know. And a lot of this, Jared, I think is, and, and, you know, the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is covered by New York State law. So I know what you're saying. And, you know, whether there's police department representatives on the, on the final oversight committee is something that we'll have to hash out in, in the legislation. But I, I, you know, it is apples and oranges. It, you can't, you can't compare DPW to the police department.
No, no, and I didn't want to be so simplifying. But what, and I do believe every officer and the chief who's been on this committee has been excellent. They made the time, okay? And, and I think overall, we have a really good police department. But what about 10 years from now? We don't know. This is, we're trying to do something here that is the betterment of the police department. And yes, we have to wait for the village and all the input, but I just want to keep that in mind. Let people think in their mind is how much direct input does the police department need to have on, because ultimately, this is a complaint that's going to go to the chief and she's going to, or he after her, are going to have to deal with it, right? That was the idea, I thought.
Yes, that is the idea. And this is.
So it's not like, it's not like the, the civilian complaint review board has nothing more but to say, listen, chief, this is a complaint that came in here. And it's a record that there was a complaint that came in. That's all.
Yeah, I agree. And this is why when, you know, I was asked before whether I was committed to all four of these, I demurred because it's too early for that.
Yeah. And I think though, the subcommittee agreed with that. We were asked to put together our best recommendation within a tight timeframe. We did so and Lauren purposely wrote that first paragraph, meaning this is our idea, but there's going to be conversation. But I think the important part to take away, instead of spending an hour, because we could literally tear this apart and be here all night. The important part was we agree there should be civilian oversight. We just are going to disagree on how that oversight should go. But we don't think just saying everything's fine, 75% of people are fine, so we don't need a civilian oversight is the answer. We think there still has to be something.
Let me just say something. I really appreciate this conversation because I, I didn't want mayor kind of to put you to a corner or commit you to anything. I just wanted to understand your position. And this is the time when you come with the recommendations and we, we have the chance to hear how this was put together. So that was, that was, that was the reason of my questioning, asking how we all came about. I understand very well the caveat at the beginning. And, and I understand that actually overall, the, the recommendations have almost that same caveat strongly, more strongly here. But, but just hearing this exchange, for example, has, has, has been very helpful and any, that was the reason I, I wanted to elicit some, some discussion of understanding on how, you know, how you view the, what we have in front of us now as a recommendation to just discuss it openly. So I appreciate the explanation.
I would like to say that I don't think it's a recommendation at all. I think it is a capitulation and a complete cop-out from the goal at hand, which was can we create a commission to have real substantive oversight of the police? And at the opposite end, are we welcoming and open to anyone who has had, for example, a negative interface with a police officer? Let's say that's a person who doesn't feel comfortable speaking English. Let's say that's a person who wants to complain about the level of intimidation they felt in an interaction. And we're all tripping over ourselves to say what a great department this is. And I keep commending the chief because when somebody said, even if there's 100 complaints, you know, the chief may not act on them and then said, but of course she would. Of course she would. She's sensitive and interactive. But she's running a force that people have their own minds and they have their own opinions and they have their own racial biases. And to expect that having cops on this commission is going to further the goals of such a stated commission seems to me utterly self-defeating. And the fact that we're talking about it as though it's virtually a necessity seems nuts. And a first recommendation that came out was we would have two police officers and three civilians. But the civilians would have to be vetted by the Board of Trustees. So it would be a fair and even selection of people, which means at least one person would be what we might call traditionally pro-police. So presumably they're always going to sign with the other two police officers. And then it'll be a three to two balance of police to civilians, essentially.
But even if it's all civilians.
Excuse me, Lauren, you and I have had this. Excuse me, Lauren, you and I have had this discussion, enough, okay?
No, I'm just saying, not everybody can.
I'm sorry.
On the board, there still has to be a number of, even if it's all civilians, right, say there's five civilians. Sorry?
I understand, I've heard you say.
No, I'm just trying, I'm, no, I don't think we've had this discussion, Theodora, I, I really don't. I'm just saying that there has to be some kind of selection of people, even if it's all civilians, not everybody who raises their hand. I mean, you can't just have a hundred people sitting on the board, is all.
I don't think anybody was even thinking of that as a possibility, you don't get to volunteer for an evening and sit, and sit there. I just think we need to be. We need to be available to the people of this village who came out, not in droves, but in trickles. In our survey, partly, we now know, because they didn't feel comfortable. And to create a kind of, of welcoming and open-eared, open-hearted listening to people. We cannot expect people to come up and speak where there's a police officer present and feel safe and comfortable, saying what's in their mind and describing experience with that officer or a fellow officer. And we may not have the thin blue line, but we have thin blue line flags plenty all over the village. We have a, a police force that I think is no better or worse than any other. And I think that they do a perfectly fine job in Mamaroneck, but we read those surveys about people's experience with the police, and there were plenty of people who said they did not feel comfortable, they did not feel safe. And eleven percent said they would not feel comfortable bringing a complaint forward to, uh, to, to the, the police department about police officers. So I, I think that we, we've asked for a survey, we've gotten the results, and then everyone seems afraid to take the steps that the survey clearly indicates we take.
Theodora, I think just because we disagree doesn't mean that we're afraid of anything, it's just a difference of opinion.
Hmm.
And.
There are multiple approaches to things.
As I pointed out, they're all strong opinions, but tonight is not for writing legislation. And, you know, those opinions will be heard during the legislative process. And, you know, th- these recommendations are just that, recommendations. I think that the, the main recommendation is that some sort of police oversight committee be formed. And, you know, I, and, you know, I, I think that, you know, that's something that the Board of Trustees will definitely take up and seriously consider. Uh, and, you know, it, but also, let's, let's face facts, there's gonna be two opportunities for the public to weigh in on this. And we have to allow the public to weigh in on it too. But, you know, I've told you how I felt, I think it's a good idea, and, uh, you know, the devil's in the details, and, you know.
I think literally that's the case, so if you're going to have more than one officer on this committee, the devil is in the details, because that is bedeviling the goal of the committee.
And that would be a cogent argument to make when we, when we're forming the law. Right now, we're deciding whether to have a committee. That's, that's my point here.
Before we move on, I just wanna get a sense from the committee, um, because I know this was a contentious issue, and it obviously still, um, is, is. Um, I, I am curious whether it was a unanimous view that there should be some kind of board, and that the quest, the, the dispute is over the makeup of the board, whether it involves police officers or not, or whether there was a sense that perhaps a review board is not necessary at all. Can I just get a sense of that?
Jerry, can you speak to that, because you polled the board?
I polled, um, the board, eight members responded my request. Um, the response was fifty-fifty, four members were in favor of, um, this process or this, um, construct of, of a complaint review board, and four members were not at all.
And that was, I think, yeah, I think Kelly's question too, though, is that you could be against this process for two different reasons, right? You could be against this process because you don't think there should be a board at all. And you could be against this process because you think it should be all civilians and not include police officers. So that's where kind of the, the detail is, is kind of important, but there, we didn't have an opportunity to vote that way, essentially. So I don't know if anybody else on the committee wants to speak up on their opinions with regard to that. Um, but that was kind of where the difference could be in whether or not you support.
Exactly.
I just, I just wanna point out before that happens, is that Jerry is vacationing with the Cruz family tonight?
In the last meeting, we had all three opinions expressed, some people said they didn't think we needed a review board at all, some didn't like this particular process, and some said, yes, we absolutely have one. So they had all three opinions expressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That, I think, is part of the, the difficulty we have in this specific process.
Yeah.
I, I, I have one comment about this, um, I, I think that, um, I mean, we'll have more comments in March, but I think before the, before the Board of Trustees tackles writing a law, the Board of Trustees should really do some more research and get some more public opinion, because we have a track history of starting public hearings and then having the public comment sort of change the way we write the law, so I think it should be more iterative before we actually draft the law. But that's not for right now, that's for the future.
Okay, thank you. Any more on this subject? That was less painful than it was.
You know, I'm sorry, I hate, I'm sorry, I, I just wanna throw out there where, where my head is on this, because what, what I'm seeing is that that this may be a good idea to have some board, um, but the problem I see is that we are a small force, and that there may not be very many complaints, and that to have an effective board, you would want people to spend a lot of time being trained, and so that they understand, and so they can be a fair board that's educated. Um, you know, if you appoint people to that board, and they go through the training, and then they don't hear anything for years, I, I don't know how effective it could be. So I'm just throwing out there whether it might make sense as other communities are looking at this, whether this could be something that could be a, a shared committee across several communities. Um, so there would be actually something to hear, if, you know, if five communities hear ten or twelve complaints a year, that might just make more sense to really invest in that group being trained and educated and ready and, and available and active, as opposed to having. I, I just throw that out there as something that maybe worth throwing, becoming part of the discussion.
The only counter I would say with that is if you look at, for example, like a judge and jury situation, right? Like, there's people who don't have any training at all that are put on a jury and are meant to decide a case. I'm not saying this is the same thing, because there's obviously attorneys and courtroom rules and, and whatnot. But I think each case that they would be looking at would be, each would probably be very different. And so it would be very specific set of rules that they would be applying. Um, and so at the end of the day, it's, I think it's more about the application of the rules than, than much else. So I'm not sure how extensive the training would have to be, um, other than, you know, general application of rules, I, I kind of liken it to that, but.
I hear that point, and, and I understand that, that Jared was getting at that as well. The other concern I have about that frankly, is that, you know, Mamaroneck is, is a particular community with particular social understanding of, of, you know, we're just our own character, and so to have a group comprised of a bunch of people from Bronxville might not make sense, you know? So it would have to be, we have to be careful, the composition, that's what I'm saying, or, or you have to.
Yeah, no, go ahead, finish what you were gonna say.
I was just gonna say, or else you'd have to have some mechanism by which, you know, someone could talk about, you know, this is, this is some background about our community, but I'm just, go ahead, Theor.
Well, first of all, I wanna say that police misbehavior does not discern among communities. And we don't push something aside because we know that person's uncle is having a hard time this week. It's the law, is the law, and police behave properly and above board, as they do most of the time. But we need to have a monitor to ensure that this happens more than most of the time. And we know it's an highly under-reported number of times that people are feeling humiliated and discriminated against by this, this police department, and we think presumably most police departments, because all of these committees are really hard at work. But the other thing I was gonna say is that I've just been, um, talking to a friend of mine who's on the town committee, and we said today, you know, it would be great if we could combine resources and maybe with the tri municipality, and even though that's just a paltry number. Um, it would be better, but it also creates the opposite of what you were saying we might need. And I'm not entirely disagreeing with you, I, I mean, I do understand that every village has its character, and there's something nice about saying, listen, his mother-in-law is going through such a hard time right now, you know, let's give him a break. But on the other hand, and I, I know you wanna say what I'm about to say, but that it protects the community, it protects that board. If there are people, it immunizes them from accusations of, you know, a sort of, eh, eh, whatever, too, 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 too local and approach, perhaps too forgiving an approach, perhaps too specific an approach. This way, it makes police proper behavior, proper behavior is the rule across the board. And a, any individual member of the committee is, um, ignored and is, is protected from any accusations of sort of favoritism or whatever else, because there are people they don't know that they're also, uh, adjudicating, or, or at least referring their, their, their issues about them to the board.
And, and actually, I was more concerned about the, the flip side of that, which is someone, you know, a board in Bronxville not understanding that we have a large immigrant community, and that maybe someone didn't speak English when they interacted with the officer, that, that kind of misunderstanding.
Yeah.
And not understanding the makeup of our community, because theirs is very different, that's what I was getting at, but.
Okay.
But, you know, this is a very good discussion, and I'm, I just want, obviously, it needs to continue, but I just needed to get a better sense of what the, your, your committee's discussions were, like what, you know, just get it somewhere, meet of what the disagreements were and what some of the points were, so thank you.
You hit a memo right now. This was the biggest one.
Very good.
Is there any chance that the county would organize a committee? I mean, I, I, that means every municipality is gonna have to buy into those rules. Might be easier for us to get three municipalities, the other two that we work with all the time, to buy into the same rules. But is there, is there a movement towards maybe the county doing it too?
Not that I know of, Nora.
They just came out with their recommendations, um, and maybe we could speak to people on their committee.
I mean, I, it might be easier to get the three communities to agree than to try and get every community in Westchester, but.
I think maybe that might be a long-term thing, right? If we can get three commi- communities together, it may give us more momentum to then.
And experience, and experience.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I wasn't used to a gap in a discussion. The next item on the agenda is the crime prevention recommendation, Jerry, do you have them up, you do? Community policing, increased foot patrols, we haven't seen foot patrols in a long time. Uh, allow pers- personnel allows increased foot patrols in more heavily trafficked areas, familiarize with local businesses and community leaders, clergy. Efforts to rotate officers of color and women to date, to day tours and visible positions, increase availability for interaction, business cards, Facebook presence, inviting communication anonymously or not. I, I, I think these are all, I just wanna speak to that one, and chief, uh, correct me if I'm wrong about this, I guess, I think that's all great. But I, I think what happens with the rotating officers, I think some officers like a certain shift. And they fit that shift into their lifestyle. So, you know, we have to, you know, there has to be some negotiation with that. I, I know that, uh, you know, there are a cadre of people who like the twelve to eight, and, uh, people are very happy that those, uh, folks like the twelve to eight, because some people hate the twelve to eight. So, you know, that's, that, that is, uh, that, that, there's always rotating people. Uh, chief, am I wrong about that, or?
Yes, so, I mean, there are, most of the officers, most of the officers that are currently on our midnight shift want to be there. Um, and we're not saying that that would be a permanent assignment, but just to utilize them, you know, occasionally, so that we can get, you know, we can put names to the faces, and so that they can see the diversity of the department. Um, and we did go forward with, um, getting business cards for all the officers, um, that they're able to put their names on it and hand those out as needed, so we've already started that. So although, you know, we haven't put forward the idea yet of rotating officers through and doing the foot patrols and the, um, community liaison officers, which is the next bullet point, um, that is something that we're looking forward to participating in.
Okay, then we'll get to the next bullet point. Uh, community justice and individualized justice, that's an interesting term. Decriminalize individuals, uh, gain assistance from community leaders, family members where individuals can be offered, uh, behavioral, behavioral improvements, options to arrest and possible, options to arrest and possible incarceration, that means, you know, and so we're not arresting. Uh, programs available from Westchester DA, Westchester County, uh, and other, the possible no plea judicial intervention. Establish liaison committee with rotating officers and community members from different areas to step in as needed, site specifically. Chief, do you wanna go through that?
So yes, so some of this would involve, uh, with the assistance of the court, the judge, and the DA's office. Um, and I'm not sure where they are in their process, but to help to come up with some of these alternative programs to incarceration. So we would have to really look to them to help us in, in that aspect of this, whether it be, um, through, through task or through Mahadi or, or, or something like that. So does it make sense to put somebody in jail if what they really need are mental health resources, or, or drug counseling or something of that nature? So that's what we're talking about there.
And, and I had a, a discussion with the district attorney, uh, this week about this specific topic. And she said that, uh, they were going to be working to expand this and to, you know, e- explain the options uh, more to courts and explain the options more to our police, and they, they are really looking to incarcerate less and to treat more. Uh, especially with drug offenses, uh, and especially with mental health problems. So hopefully, those initiatives coming out of the DA's office will, uh, alleviate some of these problems.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question, the premise probably is gonna be from left field, and probably didn't discuss it, but four years ago, when I joined the board, we had a real opioid crisis, and I see the topic popping up again. Uh, did, was that discussed, how does fit in, how, how, how should we be contemplating anything in that, in that regard now?
I, 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 I won't, I, I would think that that would go to the, uh, uh, the, uh, alternatives to incarceration. Uh, I think that a lot of the alternative to incarceration programs came out of the opioid problem, uh, so that we weren't, uh, you know, putting people in jail because they were drug addicts, and they were committing crimes that drug addicts commit. So I, I, I think that that was part of it, and I, and I just, I, I, I can assure you that there, there still is a very big opioid problem in this country and in this community.
Oh, what I, what I can tell you is that when officers respond to aided cases, uh, where there is their substance abuse, where there is an overdose, um, those persons are also referred to this crisis stabilization team, because they do have a unit that specializes um, in drug abuse and things of that nature that will help to get them counseling and resources.
So probably the, the training and the response in a way has been put together in the last four years, has changed a lot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Does, does Westchester have a drug court?
Uh, that I am not sure of.
Theo, do they have one in the city?
I'm being advised, yes, Norishell.
Norishell does.
And they have one in, in every borough in the city, yes.
And, 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 and those are about alternatives to incarceration, basically?
They are about, uh, they certainly were developed called ATI programs as alternatives to incarceration programs, and they require a DA's approval. And then they require passing a, um, a, a series of, of background and other kinds of tests, usually administered by task, which is a substance abuse organization that's very popular in, uh, New York and particularly in Westchester and in the city. Um, and then they're very long-term programs, so usually twelve to eighteen months. And some of them are six months.
Residential programs.
Uh, no, they can, they can be outpatient as well, it really, they, they really have come off of the former DA approach, which was. It really, they really have come off of the former DA approach, which was, well, if they had a lot of drugs, then they clearly need inpatient treatment and, or if they had fewer drugs, they need outpatient, which why don't you let a professional evaluate what they need? It's not supposed to be jail punitive. But here's the big change is that when the bail reforms went into effect last year, when somebody goes, gets taken in front of a judge, the bail decision is almost always going to be released on his own, on his or her own recognizance. There's no bail on nonviolent felonies. So, and no bail on any misdemeanors. So they're going to be out of jail anyway. So now it's just easier in some ways to get somebody right into a program, an outpatient program and get them to start right away. Instead of somebody sitting in jail until you get a judge to recommend it and then, you know, it, it takes a very long time. So I think it's easier now that people are not incarcerated to make these decisions.
Thank you. Thank you for your experience. The next is car stops. Source of critique of officer's attitude. Newly introduced desk appearance tickets require subject to appear in court at a later date. Reduce the stress, reduce, I'm sorry, reduce, reduces stress. Projecting, reduce the street arrest scenes after lengthy processing. Use should be expanded as much as possible for nonviolent, non-bail eligible crimes. All auto stops on video from PO vehicle, that, that's in place now. Okay. Instruction of POs to police officers to approach with courtesy introduction, maybe business cards. Not exude power and control over the situation. Keep subject informed of any delay. Written record, written record of ethnicity and age of subjects reporting to senior officer end of tour and make available on website stats. Chief, do you want to talk about this a little?
Yes, so I'll, I'll talk about each one. So, so for the first one, source of critique of officer's attitude. Sergeants now are tasked with reviewing their officer's car stops. So that is something that, you know, we can possibly increase, you know, based on, on workload. In terms of the desk appearance tickets, so those are used now in most cases already. And then most arrests right now for suspended licenses are being processed at the site of the car stop to expedite the process and to avoid transporting people into our headquarters. And that also at times results in not having to have the person's vehicle towed or impounded or anything like that. So again, in most cases, and because of bail reform, desk appearance tickets are, are what are usually issued. In terms of, well, all the stops on video, so we do have, our, our main vehicles have in-car video. We do have some spare cars that sometimes are utilized, which do not. So that would be a budgetary issue, whether we would want to put cameras in those spare cars as well, or just utilize body cameras, if that's something that the village wants to go towards. And that would alleviate the problem of, you know, outfitting additional vehicles with cameras. For the last paragraph there, again, as part of that supervisory oversight, making sure they're taking into account courtesy introduction, all those things. In terms of statistics, so currently New York State, there's a ticketing system called tracks. So that system, it captures, you know, name and date of birth, but it does not capture race or ethnicity. So that's currently something that we wouldn't have statistics on, but we could post, you know, other types of information about car stops, but that wouldn't be included because it's currently not captured.
Do the officers keep any memo book when there is a track situation? Do they also keep a memo book?
They would not keep one in addition to it. It's just the track system, basically the whole ticket gets written through the computer system. And there are, they, there are fields that are ready that they pre-populate and they just add in the information based off the person's driver's license.
Okay.
But we would look to create, let me create the new police department website to put statistical information on there.
Next up is tips line. Encourage prefer the instruction regarding probable cause necessary at all levels. A tip is not probable cause without tips or identity verified and proven reliable examined for details. Question. So how do tips lines usually work?
So right now, we, we do have, and when people call up the police desk, they can leave information about what they believe might be something that needs to be investigated. So if they leave their information, obviously that's a lot easier because then a detective can follow up and speak to them directly. If it's something that they don't want to leave their name and they just leave an anonymous, you know, complaint or a tip, then it's a little bit more legwork, but it would be investigated. And what we would like to do is as part of the revamp of the webpage, put maybe a link on there as well to encourage people to post tips on it.
But the issue in that subsection was about probable cause. That if somebody leaves a tip but does not leave their personal information, there's no ability for the officer to establish or detective to establish the veracity of the individual, you know, and, and the content of the tip. Which means it's, could easily be some, you know, neighbor with a vendetta against a neighbor dropping a fake dime on them, right? So.
Right.
Not that that would happen in Mariner.
I'm sure it happens all the time and it happens everywhere. And then if there's something else that I, the, the chief knows I have a bone to pick with this, which is that there's a, an officer who went to a two or three week free training to determine by visual impression what substance a person is on. So I think that it's probably not an exact science by any means. And that that would be something that police might use for probable cause. Well, I did a three week training and so I can tell that by the look on their face and the glassiness of their eyes, their choice, drug of choice is heroin and I'm going to arrest them for possession of heroin, even though they don't actually have any drugs on them. Now, it could be used because you want to give them medication so they don't seize, right? That, that could be part of the use, but it does seem to me a very dangerous law enforcement approach is to identify either criminal behavior or addiction based on some notion that you can see their eyes and tell what drug they're on.
Is, is it allowed in court? Is it admissible in court?
Of course not.
So, no, so this, so basically, yes, he's considered a drug recognition expert. So basically what happens is on a car stop that if they, if the officer believes that the person might be under the influence of something either in addition to or other than alcohol based on certain criteria, this officer would be utilized to further investigate to see if this person is under a different type of drug, narcotic, whatever it may be. And it's a very intense investigation, we'll call it, where it's, it involves checking blood pressure and looking at their pupils. And you're asking them questions and balancing exercises and it's, it's really runs a gamut and I, it's, I can't even tell you all the different things about it. But it's very intensive and he can testify in court as an expert based on his training.
But what are you prosecuting somebody for? Or is it to save someone's life? You'll know what kind of life-saving, you know, treatment to administer. You're going to arrest somebody for having heroin in their system?
I'm sorry. So, so this is just something like on a traffic stop.
The traffic stop issue.
Yes, they wouldn't be utilized for like an aided case or an overdose or anything like that. If it's, if someone's overdosing on something, we go there and if they're currently experiencing an overdose, we would administer Narcan and EMS would respond and we would help and, and that's it. We're not looking to prosecute or arrest anybody. Because the fact that they, they overdosed on something.
Right. I, I, the way I understood it is this is if somebody's driving erratically and they get pulled over and they don't, they don't blow a blood alcohol level, but the person's eyes are glazed and they're, they're obviously under the influence of a substance. Then.
Correct. So that, that's, that's when he would be utilized. That's correct.
I don't think he would survive a fry challenge, but maybe. It's very unlikely.
But you know what? Theo, he, he wouldn't be driving on the road.
For a few hours.
Yeah, well, then that's, that's what it takes.
Okay.
What, what do they call it? Exigent circumstances?
Maybe. Okay, that is a phrase.
Yeah, it is a phrase. If it isn't, now it is. The, the next up is, is a, a matter of great importance, the body cameras. Chief will seek grants and board will examine budget. Rules must be strictly followed. Chief, can you give us, how do body cameras usually work in practicality?
So every department that has body cameras has a policy. And the policy dictates when it's supposed to be utilized. On the only instances where it can be turned off, for example, if they're interviewing a victim of some kind of sexual assault or possibly a domestic violence victim. And basically it's used during their entire shift. And the cost, the initial cost isn't, the cost isn't so much the purchasing of the items, but it's the software and the storage of the body cameras. Now I know that one of the recommendations I believe that came up through Westchester County was trying to facilitate having something where all police departments in Westchester could have body cameras and utilize one sort of storage solution to try to help alleviate the cost for, from one particular department. So we are not opposed to it at all. We think body cameras are a good thing. It's just unfortunately just the cost that's involved with it.
Let, let me ask you something, chief. I don't know, maybe you have five or six officers usually on a shift? Would they each have their individual body camera or would they share body cameras?
So, so yeah, so ultimately the goal would be for each patrol officer to have their own because it's easier to, for the purposes of tagging the different calls that they go on, capturing the data, storing the data. It's, it's very challenging if you're passing them off, so to speak, and also for the fact that they have to be charged. And if they're constantly being used by different officers, it's never getting charged. So that's another issue as well.
Okay, that, that answers that question. Okay. Anybody else? Jared, you want to talk about body cameras? I noticed something you care about.
Yeah, yeah. I, I saw, I was watching a video where a police department had gotten a certain amount of body cameras. And after a shift that one officer logged off and his thing got charged. But it had to be manually entered in for the next officer. Say the third shift officer to pick that camera. There was an incident where the guy didn't log out, so one officer who was wearing it wasn't actually the officer who was using it. But something like that could be used also to save on costs, no?
Um, so I would have to look into it further to see if it was like every other shift or something they could be used. But, but there is an issue too, where you have, want to make sure that the right officer is assigned to the right incidents that are happening and they're properly documented as to what they are. So in terms of just each officer having their own, that makes the process easier because there's no confusion in terms of, well, like you said, the officer forgot to log off, but it wasn't that officer, it was this officer. And so just in type, in terms of record keeping, it ma- makes things a lot easier.
Thank you.
And, and also if the, if the cost isn't in the cameras and it's in the storage, you know, I'd rather just have them all have their own camera.
And, and that's, that's what it is. And I believe, I don't know if Jerry has the information readily available. But.
Jerry, do you have that information?
I provided it to the board. I don't have, I don't have it up.
You did provide it to the board. Yeah, I remember now.
What we had, Mayor, my former municipality was we had 20 cameras for 31 officers, 32 officers. So we didn't have to buy everyone a camera, but the way it worked out, the camera was open. There's cameras available for, for whatever shift was coming on.
Right. And then like we wouldn't give them to the detectives, would we?
No, normally it's just officers that are in patrol. I know as part of Westchester County's recommendations, they were looking to see basically everybody outfitted with them. I don't think that's feasible. So I mean, if we had to make a compromise, maybe we just assign them to officers who aren't using a vehicle that has a video camera in it. But again, the in-car camera systems have limitations as well because obviously they're not going to follow the officer. It's only going to be right, what's right in front of or near the vehicle. So, you know, those are the limitations with a vehicle camera.
Okay. And but any other questions or concerns about body cams?
You know, I, I do have a question. I know that part of the bail reform package in New York talked about providing discovery to everyone who had, you know, had a, been pulled over and interaction with the police and I'm concerned, I just wonder if you're talking about storage, have, have you considered the cost of retrieving, you know, the information, editing it out as part of criminal discovery? Is that, is that easy to do with body camera footage, body camera footage, or is that time consuming? Is there any, just, do you know anything about that?
So right now, as, as part of discovery, we do have to provide both paper documentation, any kind of audio or video that we have. Right now, that's something that we don't have to worry about redacting or anything like that. It goes to the DA's office, you know, as part of their evidence. So the, the, the bigger issue is something with, let's say foil requests. Those would have to be redacted. And that can be labor intensive. That also has costs associated with it. There is some redaction software that sometimes is not part of a package with body cameras, so that would have to be added in order to protect the victims and people that are not involved and things like that.
Thank you.
That's definitely something to consider in the Village of Mariner. We could have somebody boiling every shift, every officer, every day. And that is not, that is not an exaggeration. But we'll have to figure out a way to do it in spite of that. Unresolved CCRB. What is this? I propose zero or one officer. Where is that from, Jerry?
It's the way I copied and pasted from, from the, from the recommendations list of the crime prevention subcommittee. It's just the way I copied it.
Yeah, there was another subcommittee that came up with that same recommendation for a, a review board. It was just a different type of recommendation.
Yep.
This is, okay. Anybody have any questions about this? Does anybody have any other comments or questions in general?
Um, I just got one. If we go back to the number one.
Number one? Sure.
Yeah, bring it all the way back.
Community policing?
Training?
Oh, training. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So, so.
Back the other way.
No, 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 up. You were about the rotation of officers, about the rotation of officers.
Okay.
See, uh, wow.
Let me see. Let me look for it.
We covered what the number one, what we're discussing now.
Yeah, within the same subsection.
Oh, within the same section.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right. Yep, you got it.
Community policing.
Well, yeah, we, rotating officers. Right now, Village of Mariner currently has one African-American officer. And unless you're out at three o'clock in the morning, you don't know we have any. So I don't know if this, if the solution is to hire more or just to make him more visible. I understand people like that night shift. It's a nice night, nice shift. It's a nice shift. But, you know, for the rest of the community, rest of the community, we don't, they don't even know that he still exists anymore. So.
So Jared, I, Jared, I think the answer could be both. You know, we are looking constantly to, when we look to hire, to look for diversity. But then also, again, you know, that officer does enjoy the night shift, but I believe I did have conversations with him already about possibly, you know, looking for him to maybe switch off a little bit here and there. You know, manpower permitting to be able to do that, because I do think it is important. And again, a lot of people don't know that we do have, you know, a little bit of a diverse, you know, police department in terms of, you know, Hispanics and females and things like that. And even with our females, you know, we have two right now that are assigned to the midnight shift and you wouldn't, you wouldn't know that either. So I, I think it's important.
All right.
You know, yeah, I, I think a lot of the officers do it for a lifestyle, you know, maybe they have the wife works during the day or, you know, whatever, the husband works during the day and they, they, they hand off the kids and I personally.
A lot of it's childcare.
Yeah. It, it, it would literally drive me insane to work nights.
Um, I do have one thing. It's not so much a. Uh, it's not so much a question about the recommendations. It's more of, I think we touched on the timeframe where we've only really had two months to try and pull this together around a lot of different schedules. And some of this, as we see, is, are really not flushed out yet, um, or could use a little bit more work. And I think some of us wanted to take that time. Uh, now that it's gone to the Board of Trustees, but we still have a month before, I think, a month and a half before the final recommendation goes in, what are we doing? I mean, are we still going to be meeting as the PRC to flush things out? Are we done? Are we, are we meeting with the Board of Trustees? I just would like.
Jerry, why don't you handle that?
So, um, Lauren, the way I envisioned, I'm sorry, Sharon, the way I envisioned it is that, w- once we put the draft together, I'll provide it. It has to be posted before the meeting of the eighth, so we'll provide it, uh, to the board and, um, I'll ask them if they want me to share it with the PRC. If they say yes, then I'll provide it to the, to the committee as well. But at 7:30 on the eighth and at 7:30 on the 22nd, there has to be, um, some time commitment, like carving out of some time in order to discuss this with the board, uh, and of course, the members of the committee can attend, but the most important part of that process is to have the public comment on this draft. And so I think it's going to evolve up until the night of the 22nd and even past the night of the 22nd. But I, I think if the committee members will, oh, will still be committee members, but if they, um, if they want to, uh, continue to fine-tune or, or look at other suggestions, we can try to get that in. Um, but, you know, we're getting fine, we're getting, we'll get close to the final hour and then I won't be able to do that anymore. So that's my chance.
Yeah, so like, for example, after the March 8th meeting, when we're going to have public comment, would we be meeting again or is it just going to be the Board of Trustees? You know, that's what I'm, I guess, where I'm kind of asking.
We could, um, because I always envisioned it as handing it off to the Board of Trustees, but if the Board of Trustees would like me to, um, gather the committee again after, you know, the, the meeting of the eighth and the public input, we can certainly do that.
I don't, maybe, maybe I can make the suggestion that Jerry comes up with the draft. We have the first public, uh, comment period based upon, uh, the first public comment period. Maybe the committee could meet with Jerry to see if the, the draft needs tweaking based upon comments that came in. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And can, also, we, we simply, we have a hard deadline of April 1st to file this report, but that doesn't mean we can't keep working on other recommendations.
That's true.
This is what we have to, you know, like, and I want to thank the committee for, you know, just, you know, really pushing to get all this done. So we're going to meet the deadline that's required of us. And the state is going to look at these documents. I don't think they're going to come back with, I, I think they're, I, I was at a seminar last week. They're not going to be editing them. They're just going to be looking at them because they realize every community is different. But we can keep revising ours. So I think maybe that's the best way, you know, we'll get it to be as good as we can by, you know, I guess, March 28th, that's pretty tight for the staff, but then it's still a document that we can change.
And as you know, we, we, we asked for more time, uh, and, uh, received no response.
And Mayor, the correspondence that I sent to you did have that hard April 1st deadline, uh, like reiterating it again, so.
Uh, Elsa, I wanted to say something.
Can you hear me? I have a loud voice here. Can you hear me well?
No.
Not speak up, boss.
No?
Wow.
I, sorry. I just wanted to say that I, I was very pleased to hear the chief of police say that on social media, they are going to include, uh, translations in Spanish. That it's very important to reach out to, to the community, to the minority community in this village. And, uh, we have seen the progress and the success in us and in village of police, uh, officers reaching out to the community. Uh, I was reading the Westchester, uh, Westchester County, they have a PAC, meaning police and community together, uh, program. Uh, it was, uh, started by Officer Ramirez and then they have the Facebook in Spanish, started by Officer Chavez. Those have been very successful. And, uh, the, Westchester County has a language, has a policy that includes, uh, translations in Spanish. And as far as recruiting, I would like to, um, suggest, and I had mentioned this to Jerry and the mayor, that we use the county, it is in the regional list, in the Spanish list and other lists to expand the applicant pool. Because it's very important that we have a more diversified, uh, police force.
Thank you, Elsa.
Very important.
Somebody else have any more comments, complaints, concerns? Okay, so I think the next step is, uh, Mr. Barbario and Mr. Sonoff uh, are going to come up with a draft of this document. Uh, and it'll be discussed at the Board of Trustees', uh, regular meetings, it's, it's a public meeting, not, not the work session. And, uh, I, I, I please encourage all of you to show up and, you know, answer any questions about process and express your opinion. And hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll move the ball forward. This is, this has not been easy, uh, in, in these discussions are never going to be easy. Discussions on equity and race are always going to be difficult uh, until we get to a point where, you know, we, we have our cards on the table and, uh, people begin to understand each other. But this is the beginning of that process and it's going to be a process that will continue, I believe, you know, throughout all lifetimes. And hopefully, it will not, uh, continue into our grandchildren's lifetimes, but it is, this is something that should have happened, uh, after 1866 and, uh, never really happened. So we, it has fallen upon us and we cannot look away. Uh, this is our responsibility and this is, uh, the America we want to create and the community we want to create. And thank you all, especially the people who've worked on this. This has been a hard process and I, and I really appreciate it. And thank you, and we're going to need your help moving this forward because as, uh, Trustee Lucas has pointed out, this is not the end of the process. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion from one of the Board of Trustees' members, uh, to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Well, in favor of adjourn.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all for, uh, to coming out here on a Friday. Have a good rest of your weekend.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.